Good morning, and our board meeting for our seven twenty eight, two forty four. Pause order that the board is.
Mr. Lloyd.
From here.
Mr. Winfrey.
Here.
Mr. Ellbert. Mr. Brown, here. Mr. Avery.
There.
Mr. Schubert.
Present.
Mr. Fuzzell.
Here.
Mr. Weyo.
Here.
And Mr. Gates.
Next, we'll have our application will be led by Commissioner Dr. Beverly Brown.
Hey, James, um, Mr. Chair, we'd all buy a pile of heads and put them to our eyes. Dear Lord, we come to you as humble servants, and we ask that you bless us with your wisdom and bless us with your compassion, and to govern Genesee County for the benefit of our residents. And we thank you, Lord, for all of the first responders in our county who worked diligently to aid those who were impacted by tornado last night. And we thank you for our emergency team here, Lord, at Genesee County for the fine job that you do. Finally, Lord, may you grace us with your, uh, your wisdom and help us to shape a future full of prosperity, harmony, and opportunity for all of the citizens in the county.
Amen. And now we'll move on to our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to, um, request a moment of silence in memory of Flint City Councilman, uh, Eric Mays, whose district, uh, is inside, uh, First County Mission District, a long-term check-in, uh, voiceless in this community, uh, certain community, this community may be rest from his labor and be remembered for his many contributions, a moment of silence. Thank you.
Next, we'll have approval of meeting minutes. Uh, we're fourteen, if you want to move it.
What report?
Any questions?
Just, just a correction, we made, uh, resolution, uh, twenty-four dash zero nine action, we're having a section, uh, Bill twelve thirty-one, twenty-three, not twenty-four.
We're actually not, uh, that being stated, uh, all those in favor. All of us, both, yes. Next, we'll have, uh, opportunity for public address, uh, opportunity for a lot of public collect, uh, public address, uh, four reading, uh, office, uh, we have, uh, we just state your name, your city, and your active time, uh, screen.
Brandon, you don't mean out of township, election years has a tendency to run out. Some interesting things, two thousand and four, as far as, uh, earth flu started, two thousand and eight, earth flu, two thousand and ten, swine flu is still going on, two thousand and fourteen, Ebola in Africa was big, two thousand and sixteen, the Zika, the WHO declared emergency, two thousand and eighteen, Ebola again in Africa, and twenty twenty, there's some stars COVID too, going on. Interesting on how election years, things come up like this. Four years ago, we went through a time prayer where people were very fearful. Things got shut down, a lot of unconstitutional things went on. I just want to remind you of federal law, twenty-one USC, three sixty BBB dash three states that you have the right to accept or refuse any emergency use product. Anytime people are more than free to use a mask or taking a jab vaccine, but not to be forced on the rest of us. It is also, we know how much the schools were affected, these kids were affected greatly by being forced to stay home. The lack of learning has affected them both mentally, emotional, and socially. But I, I don't want to see, um, a health director force and force these superintendents to mask kids and to keep them out of school. Thank you.
Anybody else with public comments? Thank you. Next, we'll have our communications.
We got communications.
Next, we'll go to our appointments, resolution twenty-two forty-four, two forty-one, move a request to appoint Commissioner Ellen Ellbert to the nine one one board as the executive board representative. So move. Any questions? Uh, there we are.
Aye.
Both, both passes. Next, we have resolution twenty-two forty-four, two forty-two, approve a request to appoint Commissioner Mark Uzino to the nine one one board as the general member and executive board.
So.
Board. Any questions? Uh, there we play, say aye.
Aye.
Of both, both passes. Next, we have resolution twenty-two forty-four, two forty-six, approve a request by Genesee County Parks Recreation Commission, Bill Mike Patrick, uh, Parks and Recreation, who write.
So move.
The board.
Any questions or discussions?
Yeah, I assume this was, uh, approved by the, uh, Park Board, correct?
Correct. Yes.
Is Mr. Lanahan present?
He is. That's good. Based on our board.
Could you please say a word to about your mission for the person, right?
Sure, so, uh, as we move forward with, uh, Genesee County Parks, uh, what I really want to do is focus on the community. Um, I want us to be able to be seen in the community. I want to make sure that we're responsive to the community needs, uh, and we're offering value to the community. Thank you.
Any other questions? We're just ready. We have microphone issues right now, so you just have to come to the speaker.
Okay. Um, I, I've got a question for, to the chair, to the board, um, obviously, this recommendation is made in the Parks Board, but we're the ones that are obviously accountable for any ongoing, uh, position, that's what you're talking about. I would, if the chair could enlighten me on what the process was to come to conclusion to hire who we're gonna hire, um, if someone could disclose that to me, how that, how that meant, so we can understand, because I know we've had discussions in my years here of how we need to go about filling the department heads, which possibly, and, um, I'm just wondering, is this one we're gonna vary from, or how we're gonna do this because of the board, that we hired a health officer that wasn't the help department board who made the decisions, the county board? So that's, I'm just wondering what the process was, and are we gonna stick with that by allowing more inside departments if they have them, or make recommendations for tomorrow, if they're retired, or how?
Good question. As far as the internal, if you'd like to have the, um, chair of the, um, Parks Board to.
Yeah, and I, I can just talk about process, so the Parks Enabling Resolution, um, that created Parks Recreation Commission, charged the Parks Recreation Commission in, um, kind of going through that voting process, interviewing candidates, and then making a recommendation for one person to the, this county board commissioners. Um, county board commissioners are then charged with either agreeing with those Parks Commission recommends or not agreeing with them. They did go through that process, they advertised for a position, they interviewed for the position, uh, and they chose them to recommend, um, Patrick to this board for either yes or no, yes or no vote. So this, um, this department head differs from other department heads in that there's specific legislation that deals with that process, um, to move forward.
When you said legislation, is that on our level or state?
It is, yeah.
So, once again, it's the laws, the commission's score, that it's not, like, we want to change anything?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Um, do we happen to know, okay, Mr. Chair, do we, do we happen to know how many applicants we received for this position?
My understanding, um, that there was, that there were eleven total candidates that applied, and out of the eleven that applied, seven were minimum qualifications. The hiring committee then sat down and went through the.
Candidate profile and came down with two candidates that fit the profile for us in our park system. We interviewed those two candidates, both candidates interviewed quite well. Um, Patrick had, uh, a lot more extensive background in Parks and Rec and, and what we are looking for to move forward with our Parks and Rec system. And his, his qualifications, uh, were, were greatly, um, exceeding the other candidate. So, and, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Right, my manager. You, you had mentioned that his qualifications, that what you were looking for, did you enlighten the board as to what the board, the Parks Board was looking for in the nine one one candidate?
We're looking for somebody that had extensive background in the variety of parks that we have. And we have a campground, we have an ORV, um, the mounds, we have, uh, over eleven thousand acres, uh, we have equestrian trails, we have our attraction at Crossroads Village, um, we have our own park rangers, um, we have, uh, swimming, swimming beaches, uh, we have limited bow hunting, we have waterfall hunting, and so we were looking at somebody that was well-rounded in a lot of these different, uh, areas. Uh, Patrick's qualifications, he has been a park ranger in the past, he's managed a campground, he's, uh, been a director in Grand Blank Township for two years, if I remember right. And so his, his experience and his background met what we were looking for in, in our consistency moving forward.
Thank you.
Good, Commissioner, okay. Any other questions for the details? Yes, Commissioner Wayo.
I'll just address, um, you know, the issue of hiring the department heads. I, I think that, as Mr. Freeman has pointed out, this is a different process, uh, because of what we've said in the past or what we've established. Um, I do have interest in, um, department head hiring outside of the parks to make it a more consistent process along the lines of what we try to do with appointments to commissions, which are non, non-employment situations. Um, so, you know, I, I think Commissioner Shoemaker is perhaps saying something similar. Um, I'm trying to get to that in terms of being able to work on it. Um, been working on the, uh, Corporation Council Job Description with Mr. Freeman for some time. That's sort of step one in trying to make things a little more uniform in terms of how we approach job descriptions, positions, and hiring people. Um, this is a different situation, I think, unless, of course, going forward, we decide to change it. So, happy to support it, um, made the motion to approve the recommendation, sounds like there was a serious vetting process, uh, from the folks on the, the Parks Board, and, um, appreciate the diligence with which you approached it, and certainly, um, commend the candidate and his qualifications. You weren't able to introduce yourself, but if you would, and, and what your title is.
My name is Joe Creepel, I'm president of the Parks Commission. And just for the commission's benefit, um, Anne Figaroa is our secretary of the Park Commission. I believe she has a master's in, uh, human resources, she was on a committee, uh, Chairman Avery was also on a committee, I'm, I'm sorry, on a committee, and, uh, Vice President Jim Washington, who has extensive leadership and business background, so they were, they were unanimous on, on the selection.
Thank you.
And we went through a twenty-question process to ask each candidate, each candidate got the same questions, and we evaluated them based on their answers.
Yeah, I, I know, uh, Anne Figaroa quite well, uh, from another, um, place in my life, and I know that she's got a, is extensive human resources background, so I know that she would have been quite diligent in the process, so thank you.
Patrick can tell you, she.
Thank you.
She's on the spot, so.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. That it for questions. Okay, so for show of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes, and I'd like to congratulate Mr. Patrick Linnahan as the new Parks and Recreation Director going forward.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you.
Would you, would you, would you like words to share, uh, beyond what was asked?
This, uh, opportunity here, um, back here, this, the second row, this is all our, some of our administrative staff, and, um, you know, they're, they're the ones that make the things happen every day. Uh, the director is there to, uh, to serve them, you know, I work for them to help get them what they need to do and to help the community. So, um, you know, we have a great team, uh, this is gonna be great moving forward, and I thank you for your confidence. I am at the Michigan Parks Conference this week, so I apologize, I'm going to take off and head back to Kalamazoo since it's snowing, uh, but thank you, look forward to working with you all.
Thank you, and congratulations. Next, we'll move to our standing committees. Our last committee meetings, uh, the Community and Economic Development did not have, uh, committee, but is there a report that needs to be shared?
No report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to our Finance Committee, uh, Commissioner Cusano, Chairperson, Dr. Beverly Brown, Vice Chair.
Uh, thank you, Chairman, I would like to defer to, uh, Commissioner Brown, uh, I was on vacation last week during committee, so I think she should continue with this, okay?
Commissioner Brown.
Move Resolution twenty-two forty-four, one twenty-three, approval of a request by Genesee County's Parks and Recreation Commission to apply for a grant in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars from the Michigan National Resources Trust Fund for the purpose of renovating historic pavilions at Flushing and Linden County Parks. This grant requires a twenty-six percent match that is available in the current budget.
Okay, we have motion and support, any question, discussions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
I move approval of Resolution twenty-two forty-four, one twenty-six, approval of a request by Genesee County's Parks and Recreation Commission to apply for a grant in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars from the Michigan National Resources Trust Fund for the purpose of developing sports fields at the city of Flint's Burston Fieldhouse. This grant requires a twenty-six percent match that will be provided by the Friends of Burston.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support, any question, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
I move Resolution twenty-two forty-four, one fifty-five, approval of the proposed ARPA funding allocation for the Y M C A.
Support.
We have motion and support, any question, discussions?
Just to let the public know, this is a two hundred thousand dollar, um, allocation.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
And motion passes, thank you.
I move Resolution twenty-two forty-four, one sixty-five, approval of a request by Genesee County's Health Department to create, post, and fill one environmental health sanitation position, no additional appropriations needed.
Okay, we have a move and support, any question, discussions? Although, I'm sorry, Commissioner Brown.
Mr. Chair, I'm, uh, gonna be voting no on this, just for, um, a technicality in the job description, just, and I've already discussed it with the HR person.
Thank you. Any further? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you, motion passes.
I move Resolution twenty-two forty-four, one ninety-seven, forwarding to receive and file a copy of the paid county bills for the week's ending in one twenty-one, twenty twenty-four, one twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four, and two four, twenty twenty-four, in the total amount of ten million, eight hundred, twenty-nine thousand, six hundred, fifty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents.
We have a move and support, any question, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
I move Resolution twenty-two forty-four, two hundred, approval of a proposed budget amendment to the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four appropriations resolution for various line items as described in the attached budget adjustment request.
Support.
Okay, move and support, any question, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
I move Resolution twenty-two forty-four, two zero four, approval of a request to increase hourly wages of non-union staff at Genesee County's Community Action Resource Department to fifteen dollars per hour.
Support.
We have a move and support, any question, discussions?
Mr. Chair, there is one job description that we missed, Anita, if you're out there, can you come up and talk about what that job description is? That we'll need to make an amendment, we want to make sure that we've included everybody in that.
Okay.
Good evening. We have one position left, um, that is a breastfeeding peer counselor, that's thirteen twenty-six, so the request would be to add that to the list of positions, to move all of what we have remaining up to fifteen dollars.
So somebody can just make an amendment to add that breastfeeding peer counselor?
Correct.
Opposed.
Support. Okay, amendments have been added, so now for approval, uh, both in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Now we need to make a motion, or vote on the final motion as a.
I'll move it.
Yes, final is amended, thank you. Okay, we have that, uh, motion and move, or support, rather, we have a movement?
Support.
Okay, um, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Next, we go to our Government Ops Committee, uh, where we have, uh, Commissioner Wayhill, Chairperson, Dr. Rico Loy as Vice Chairperson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, our first resolution is twenty-two forty-four dash one-one-eight, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Plant Moran for continued healthcare consulting services, so moved.
Support.
Okay, any question, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
We have Resolution twenty-two forty-four dash one-six-zero, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Gerber Life in an amount not to exceed seven hundred, two thousand, five hundred, fifty-nine dollars to provide stop-loss insurance for employee healthcare coverage.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, any question, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
I'll move Resolution twenty-two forty-four dash one-six-eight, approval of a request by Genesee County's Department of Geographic Information Systems to travel to the Imagine G I S Conference at Crystal Mountain, Michigan. The dates of travel are June second through four, twenty twenty-four. Total cost for three staff members not to exceed two thousand, one hundred, ninety-six dollars, eighty-one cents. This is a budgeted expense.
Support.
Okay, we have a move and support, any question, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
Our final resolution is twenty-two forty-four dash one-nine-six, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Campaign Finance U.S. in an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand dollars to provide campaign finance software to the Genesee County Clerk's Register Office. The term of this agreement is January first, twenty twenty-four, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. The cost for this agreement will be paid from account that's listed.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, any question, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Is there a report from, uh?
Not so much a report, but I want to echo what, uh, Commissioner Brown said in her, uh, invocation for tonight, and give compliments to the county clerk, uh, and his staff for, uh, the excellent work on Election Day, and in the days leading up to Election Day. I, um, I misunderstood early voting, so I drove to my actual polling place, uh, at Living Word Church, texted the clerk to say, um, there's no one here, and he said, well, that's because you're supposed to be at the township. So I drove there, and he was actually there, um, oversee, not overseeing, but, um, making sure that things were running smoothly, and I know he traveled around the county doing that in other places. So, hats off to you, uh, Mr. Clerk, and to your staff who helped you run a, a very tight election.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I was remiss with the Finance Committee, was there a report from the Finance Committee that needs to be shared?
A report.
All right, thank you. Didn't want to skip over you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we'll go to our Human Services Committee, we're, Committee, where we have Charles Winfrey, Chairperson, and Sean Shoemaker as Vice Chairperson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move Resolution twenty-two forty-four, one forty-four, approval of an amendment of a contract between Genesee County and Hurley Medical Center in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars to provide for further case management, care, coordination services for Genesee County's Healthy Start Program.
Support.
Okay, we have a move and support, any question, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
I move Resolution twenty-two forty-four, one-six-seven, approval of a request by Genesee County's Health Department to travel to the twenty-twenty-four National Latex Conference on H I V, H C V, and S U D in El Paso, Texas. The dates of travel are May second through the fourth, twenty twenty-four. Total cost for four employees to attend not to exceed, uh, ten thousand dollars, and is grant-funded.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any question, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
I move Resolution twenty-two forty-four, one seventy-four, approval of a request by Genesee County's Community Action Resource Department to apply for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five Head Start Grant. Total grant amount is fourteen million, four hundred, fifty-seven thousand, one hundred, seventy dollars.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any question, discussions? Commissioner Wayo.
Just a comment, Mr. Chair, um, this is a considerable amount of money, and I think, you know, it's a routine kind of thing, right? But it's critically important that the county play a role in providing childcare, uh, for people who need it, especially people, uh, who are eligible for Head Start. Uh, and I know that we've done, um, something similar with our county employees through TriShare, but I think it's worth noting that this commission unanimously supported that, and I assume, uh, will unanimously support this. Uh, it's important to, to provide that so that parents, um, are able to have confidence that their children are learning and developing, but also that they have good childcare, so the parents can, um, you know, participate in the workplace and, and other ways, so thought I'd mention it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
I move Resolution twenty-two forty-four, one ninety-four, approval of a request to place the renewal of the Genesee County Senior Services Millet on the August sixth, twenty twenty-four ballot.
Support.
We have a move and support, any question, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
I move Resolution twenty-two forty-four, one ninety-five, approval of a proposed budget amendment in the amount of two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars to provide for the continued operation of the senior center congregate meal program. Funding for this program will come from the Senior Services Millet.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any question, discussions?
Mr. Chair, I just want to say, repeat what I said last week to, uh, Lynn and to Pam, appreciate the two departments within the county working together, um, having conversations with V AAA, but also the senior centers to extend the ability for us to provide meals so that seniors who still do not feel comfortable under COVID restrictions or COVID pandemic, um, so that they can obtain the meals at the senior center, but also take them home or wherever they wish to eat them, um, knowing that in the fall, we're gonna, uh, transition back to more congregate style. So thank you to them.
Thank you, Commissioner. For a show of approval, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
I move Resolution twenty-two forty-four, one ninety-eight, approval of, of an agreement between Genesee County and various partner organizations to provide medication to S T I clinics. There is no cost to the county for this M O U.
Support.
We have a move and support, any question, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Next, we go to our Public Works Committee, where we have Ellen Ellen. Next we go to our Public Works Committee, where we have Ellen Ellenberger as Chairperson and Michelle Davis as Vice Chairperson. Uh, in their absence, I will present the resolutions. Resolution Twenty Twenty Four One Seventy Two, approval of a grant award from the Greater Flint, uh, Greater Flint Coalition, Health Coalition, in the amount of thirty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars to provide for park location assessment and program coordination at City of Flint Parks.
Support.
We have move and support. Any question, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next we have Resolution Twenty Twenty Four One Seventy Three, approval of modification number two of an agreement between Genesee County and Sorensen Growth LLC in an amount[1661.62]